I'm all for it. I'm feeling a little bit under the weather, so. All right, let's call this. Let's call the meeting, the planning commission meeting on twelve June twenty twenty four to order at six oh three P M. We'll do our. Our commissioner reports first. I'm just gonna go ahead and say I had to have the Airway Heights Police come out to my business a couple of weeks back, and I really appreciated how they responded and how professional they were, and I just want to give them a shout out for that and how how much I appreciated that. Other than that, I don't have anything. Anybody else have a commissioner report today?
No. I've got just one or two little things. In trying to wrap my head around what we're working on here lately, I ran across a couple of things and Zach reminded me, he actually just wanted to show me the first one. The eighty eighty universe. So this is a product that the city of Seattle is using, and it's it's an open new website you just go in there, and it's got it's got a ton of stuff, and it's got a lot of. Helping property owners find what they can do on their property, plug in your address, and it'll tell you. Just almost exactly, you could do this combination. They've got built in plans that you can say, yeah, build that unit or this kind of unit. And it's it's obviously way past what we would need. For the next hundred years probably, but I thought the idea was kind of neat in in whether we did something that was a little more. Well, shoot, just lost the word, the opposite of digital, but anyway. Paper based or just a simple web base or something tied into our existing G I S stuff. I just thought it was a really cool resource for for people, particularly anybody who's looking. To come here and do something, which is something we'll need to try to encourage, right? We're gonna get what we need to get. The other thing was a product documented put out by the state's Commerce Department. And it's about forty four forty pages. And it kind of explains the the new law, particularly the A D U law. But it has again, a lot of just a lot of sort of simply simply put explanations and definitions and some examples and. It's I find it's been kind of helpful, and I would thought about printing, but like I said, forty pages in my prayer, they explode. But kind of cool tools, there's some just some kind of neat stuff out there to try to help weigh through. What these things are, what they might look like, and this one in particular has several links to other municipalities. Addressing what they've done with code changes, yeah. Just all those kinds of things as we wait through eventually all of the parameters in this program. This this has a lot of save us some labor work maybe. If we look it up, that's all I got.
That's pretty interesting. Thank you. Does anybody else have commissioner?
Yeah.
No.
All right, let's move on to staff reports.
I don't have a whole lot. We did meet this morning with S S T who were working on the. The sustainability update on. I have a feeling we'll probably be bringing that soon. To you, we did talk about the data request bill, and there are some items in there that I don't know how we're gonna get, but we're gonna figure it out. So that's gonna be a fun puzzle. I will say on the A D U universe, that site is really cool. It's essentially a story map. So it's built on R G I S, which is the system we have. Wow. So hypothetically, we should build it if we had somebody working on it forty hours a week for six months. So but the idea is is really neat, and it's built on software. It's really accessible. So I yeah, I do appreciate that. Beyond that, I don't have a whole lot. We're just really busy. This is the beginning of our busy season, so we're getting calls about. Development all the time. Things are moving, things are shaking. Fourth of July is coming up. We're gonna have some block parties. That's kind of the the theme this week, but um, yeah, that's all I got. Heather, you probably got more fun stuff than I do.
Um, so we do have some continued public engagement activities for the U S two designs on the website. So that includes some pop up events, the consultants are attending. About the design. Post curtain out to the phase two business owners as well last week, so that's all the businesses north and south of the highway between Craig. And Gerfield. So that they can get engaged. Around the project. And. Will be so the pop up events real quickly, we already did another farmer's market here in Airway Heights. They're gonna go to the movie night this Saturday, and then they're gonna go to the. Fairchild Horse Base of Benning House on twenty second and twenty third, they're allowed to go up there. To engage in that project. We also. Will be going to bid here theoretically next week on the Craig Road Sherwood's path, so that project will start. In early August and be done by fall. So that's the Sherwood's path that connects U S two to Sixth Avenue, also. Be going to bid at the end of July on Sixth Avenue for that project, and so the work will probably start on Thursday. And move over preceding that there will be a water sewer and reclaimed water project. To extend those lines down. So reclaimed water and water will go all the way down to Craig Road. Sewer will go down as far as South Ketchum. For that project, so. As soon as that. Is ready for bid. We'll be communicating any kind of temporary. Construction management plan for the traffic going through that area because they they basically dried out strip. You know, and then they go and they lay the lines in that area, so. They'll begin the season for work and some delays that are there. You probably noticed that there already is. Construction signage and delays at Lions and U S two. Tell all your friends and everybody consider alternate routes. First, let's see, I think either Monday or Tuesday I was out on U S two, and it was back at D O T.
Yes, that's crazy. It's a road back up. I wish it would date and put it to where Columbus is gonna last.
Look all the way until September.
Goodness.
And what are we doing? There's a roundabout with the Travis building, the Calisville Tribe at U S two and Lions. And the Tenth Avenue project is sort of construction, so that will connect Gerfield to Hayford Road. And it will include a new lighted intersection at Hayford and Tenth Avenue. So.
Most of that would be lighted.
That would be a inner, you know, lighted intersection with other crossings. So. They're still working with the contractor, but the hope is to move the the new signal ahead and get that installed at Hayford and Tenth. Before they they get too far on the roadway construction, but that that will be. Potentially including some delays when they want to go put in the. New lighted interchange there, but that project will be done by November. And so once that is done, and then the connection to Sixth Avenue is done. There'll be continuous route traveling from Deer Heights all the way to Craig Road, that's along that roadway.
They can completely bypass Highway Two.
They completely bypass Highway Two, using that route. Um, so just so you know, people are asking, you know, a little bit more about the projects and what they're picking off and what's actually. Going on out there.
Yeah, may the silver light, you know, what the lines that go out to Craig, because that can happen before winter.
Yeah, that'll happen. They'll go to bid. This month, and it'll probably start next month in July. And I think that's a forty five day. That's a workday, not a calendar day, forty five day project, so. That won't be done until. October. With them putting that in. Because they've got they've got quite a ways to put the new line in. But the benefit is we'll be able to serve the Sixth Avenue landscaping will all be purple type.
Yes, that's great.
So we'll be using reclaimed water for the irrigation, so. We're kind of excited around that because I were choosing a drought tolerant palette, and so I think we're gonna kind of. Talk more to Katie and Alana about how it's a it's a conservation project, you know, conservation of water, that's all, and we're suitable to the environment here. So those are just some of the roadway projects moving forward, which we'll talk a little bit more about over the coming months. We have a rough timeline for the work on the twenty twenty six comprehensive plan update. That we'll be working on, and we'll be bringing that to this group probably in August. Take a look at. So we're gonna go out looking for consultants with this. With that work probably in July. So there'll be two years of work, not only on the comprehensive plan, but. Integrating the work that is in the missing middle project and in the climate and greenhouse gas reduction. Program into that comp plan, and then we also. Will be looking at updating our. Zoning standards and the standards that are associated with that that regulate development so that they're all consistent and they. Encourage this kind of development, so that will include us looking at things like impact fees. Because with the new A D U law, we can't charge more than fifty percent of a single family. Graphic impact fee, and we'll have to look at things like general facility charges for water, so sewer hookups, and we're gonna have that day. Our standards and the public work standards for things like access, and you'll see a little bit more about that today. About how trying to retrofit existing lots. For new housing density, we'll be having to look at somebody's mechanisms, and they'll be. Integral to that discussion moving forward, so just giving you a heads up, we're leaving your work program late this summer, and then we'll be. You'll get to see kind of the relationship between some of this work and where we're going with the plans moving forward. And it's great season, so. We're applying for lots of grants right now, so we just applied for. Funding to do infill sidewalk connecting Sunset Elementary and Sunset. Park to Sixth Avenue, which is a sidewalk. We put in a Washington State Department of Transportation Bike and Pedestrian Grant to supplement the state of federal appropriation we got for the roundabout. That was one point eight seven million dollars we got in the federal, so we're asking for some state match with the roundabout at U S two in Gerfield. And we'll be putting in for a couple of their projects, which include our big focus, which is to get funding. For U S two from Los Angeles to Linn's room. So we can build that segment and help. With traffic mitigation and safety, which is a big factor. Around that and helping businesses with improved streetscape.
Another relative is right there between Sunset Elementary and the park.
That is a local access for King Street, and so that road, like many others, we have to figure out how we're going to reconstruct that road. So and we just had this conversation at the study session on Monday with City Council. So we apply for state and federal grants. They pay for ninety five percent of of all projects, which road classifications to state and federal grants cover.
Great, awesome.
They only deal materials and collectors, so how much of our local street network are our local access streets?
Well, every grant dollar you get saves a dollar for something else.
True, so so about ninety percent of our streets are local access, and so there's no state and federal funding. So we have to figure out locally how we're going to take roads that are old, you know, and they're they're no longer stable and. And how we're gonna reconstruct them, and then we have roads that are dirt. And now we're gonna get those paid, so. We'll be working on some of these in over the next year or two about how to create a plan so we can. Start chipping away at some of those roads. That's a good question. A lot of the money right now is only available for sidewalks. Or bike lanes, because there it's all about. Alternatives to being in part for funding. But no maintenance money really on the street.
And for structure, that's right. You gotta replace pipe underneath, so you gotta tear them out and replace pipe, and then you get a new road.
Uh, well, the college has gotten some guidelines about that, and that that new road is about fifteen feet maximum width.
Then you gotta find managing funds.
You gotta find for the other twenty five feet. Find the money to to be there. Yeah, they're on that one.
Aren't they?
That's it.
Mark, real quick, I just I forgot. We do have an open call for commissioners for both the planning commission. And the arts commission right now, so that is gonna end on the twenty fifth. We will be bringing candidates to the July planning commission meeting for review. So right now, we have the one candidate, but if anyone has anyone who knows that they're interested. That's on the website, point him to that, have him fill it out and get it to me for either commission. We are looking for our commissioners, so that would be something if anybody knows a local artist who's interested in. Getting involved in the facilitation of public art.
On the mural location.
Yeah, oh. There's so much. So the Arts Commission did meet Monday. We did pick a site for our our first mural project and. Pending a thumbs up from the owner who told us in person that they were okay with it, but I needed in writing. Our first mural project will be at Billy's Diner. Right downtown there, right on the sidewalk, so it will be the the east facing wall, so as you're coming, as you're heading west there, it'll be right on the side there, so. It's a small it's a small space, but we're really excited, and we we have some really good parameters. We've already had two groups of mural artists reach out. For a project that hasn't been announced yet, so apparently so. So, yeah, so that's interesting. So we're I did email her today and just to give official thumbs up, and then we will be circulating that next week. For probably about a month to to get some applicants for the mural project, but yeah, we're really excited about that.
Sweet.
What's that?
What's gonna be gained?
Um, so we have, we do have a public art plan that was created in twenty seventeen that kind of provides parameters for public art. In this case, the downtown. Area is designated, I believe the the wording has to do, it's something to do with aviation, so it'll be some sort of a either a plane or a flight theme. But we have it all written out in the called artists, but generally that's that, and it can facilitate other items as well, but it has to kind of primarily be focused around that. The art plan is really interesting. It's on our website under sub area plans, if you're ever looking for a read, but it it does go into depth on the different areas of the city and and kind of. The flow is really interesting. It was actually really well done, so maybe prior to my or Heather's time at the city, so.
Cool. I look forward to getting those positions filled and then seeing this mural as it comes to life.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Zach. Let's move on to our roll call. Commissioner Ponce.
Present.
Commissioner Collins, present. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Mike, Zach, do you mind pulling up? Are we already have the agenda? My bad. We're gonna motion up.
Move to approve the agenda?
Check.
All those in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Zach's pulling it up right now. Can we get a motion on the meeting minutes from last month?
He passed the meeting of last month, right?
Yep. Aye.
Aye, three minutes. Motion to pass.
Those in favor? Habits, all right. Public or. Comment, right? We don't have anybody in our, I can't tell, but I don't think saw anybody a little bit ago.
Uh, no, no one is in the room and no one has joined the Zoom, and we have not received any written comments since the last meeting.
Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight. We don't have public hearings tonight. We'll move on to our missing middle workshop for tonight.
I'm gonna need you to help facilitate this because it's a lot.
Sure, so just to recap for the discussion. A missing middle is a requirement under the the Growth Management Act, and it is a description for a whole body of housing that has been identified to be missing from the typical housing stock communities. And then to that housing stock typically includes things like townhomes. Clusters of small dwelling units on a single property called a cluster subdivision. Duplexes, triplexes, a type of housing that you've probably seen in in old movies, you know, the courtyard apartments, you know, where. There was, you know, single level apartments all around a courtyard area. As well as things like stacked flats. So we receive grant funding to. Develop the necessary standards in order to allow for this type of housing. And we're in the second part of what we would call an audit by our consultant framework. To ascertain what the state law requires. And looking at our existing configuration of lot and blocks, how well does this kind of housing fit onto our existing lots? Just a little reminder, our typical lot sizes are six thousand square feet and seventy two hundred square feet. That's that's been the minimum lot size for. Decades, and so most of our lots conform to that kind of pattern. We also typically do not have alleys, so all of our homes are typically single family. And they are facing an adjacent public street for purposes of not only access to the front door, but to the car. We also have a requirement in this bill, which is now a new state law, that committees like Airway Heights, which are joining. A large city, which in this case is the city of Spokane, by a common boundary called an urban area boundary. We are required to have a minimum of two units. For a lot that our residents could typically be built on to be allowed in the future. And there was another bill that was passed having to do with accessory dwelling units, which Bill spoke to, which also require we have to allow two accessory dwelling units on every single lot or a single family home can go. So where we are here is basically their final draft of this audit. Ascerting with these two laws, what can we fit onto a typical city lot in Airway Heights? Questions at this point? Spoiler alert. It results in that we'll be allowing three dwellings for a lot in order to meet these various requirements. Okay. So, um, basically grants are all oriented around the idea of a deliverable, and in this case. The deliverable that we're returning back to our grant agency, the Department of Commerce, the first one is this audit, like here's what the state law requires. Here's the landscape of the city of Airway Heights. Here's how well. It fits, and then it comes out with some recommendations, and that will be our kickoff point for starting to look at a new development code that will incorporate some changes. To our zoning, because remember, we don't build the housing, but we have to create the opportunity for it to exist.
You say it's required, so we, by law, so you have to put three ones on there, or when these are, or this is.
That's a good question. The city doesn't do it. The property owner isn't required to do it. What we have to do is create the opportunity that if a property owner wanted to, that they could do it. That's a really good question. That's kind of, that's important. We're not forcing you to add the units to our lot. Okay. So that's what most of this information in the packet is about, and it's kind of a. Review of what we went over at last month's meeting. So I think the funnest part is once we get down to. The images that that show us.
Do you want to just go straight to that, or do you want to talk about the policy choices we?
Sure, we'll go with policy choices. So that's a good. Point. One of the things that we were asked at the beginning of this audit is when we talk about accessory dwelling units. We have this policy choice about whether counting them toward the minimum number of units on a lot or not. And the reason. That you wouldn't count them is that you get more buildings if you don't count A D Us, because every. Every zone is based on idea of how many maximum number of units you could have. On on a lot or in an acre. That's the older version of looking at it. By not counting accessory dwelling units, you could get more buildings because you don't count that as density. The con is that you have to then have even further reduced standards. Because even though you're not counting the density, the building itself still has to meet. Building setbacks, building high maximum lot coverage, and so you. As a result, would end up with more building coverage. On an individual lot when you don't count an accessory dwelling unit. The other way was we count the accessory dwelling unit toward meeting our minimum density. Our number, that's for the number of units that we have on a piece of property. So we counted for total density, but it also allows for a little bit. More room to consider things like having distance between buildings. Distance of those buildings to the adjoining. Lot lines as well as the total coverage of the lot with the building, and so. The assumption here is that we're counting accessory dwelling units as part of the density, so that we have more flexibility with development standards, and we don't have to increase. The amount of site covers allowed in order to count. Not count a phantom unit on the lot. I know that seems very complicated, but that's that's just generally what those do, and remember, nobody has to build all of it, but then we we allow these reduced setbacks and increased coverage. Uh, let's see. So we have really three residential zones, the R one, R two, and R three in our existing codes. The R one is single family, or two is called the duplex, and here three is the multi-family. You can do single family in all three lot, in all three zones. That's why it's being examined is because the bill is broad enough to say anywhere you can do single family, you have to examine. This minimum density. So you can see the seventy two hundred applies to the R one and six thousand square foot minimum lot size. Applies to those other two zones. So when we talk about density. For us, as as the government agency, we use density as a way of of thinking about the maximum. Envelope that the developer is gonna use this piece of acreage and how many units they're gonna get on there. That's the old way of thinking, but having our current density for the single family zone was five. That's relatively low. We actually have seen. Case law where. There have been appeals about local agencies in the state of Washington adopting density and being relatively low, and and those court cases have said. Really, in a urban setting, instead of a city, that's what urban is, we really should be looking at six or more. So we already have a relatively low base density. As we get to the duplex zone, it moves to ten, and then our maximum today is twenty units per acre. When we start looking at this minimum of two units per lot. Those densities increase, and when we start applying the additional A D U requirement. So remember, you have to have two units per lot plus you have an A D U, so now you have to combine those. That increases the density even further, so. What we ended up looking at is by counting the A D U as part of the density. Our densities will end up being around eighteen. Or our, what would be today, our single family zone, all the way to twenty two, so slightly higher. Than our current multi-family, but it will be significantly higher in what we call our single families zone, because if you had. And these are all exercises, right? This isn't actually being built. If you were to take all of our. Residential zones, R one, which is about eighty percent of our residential area, and you allowed. For all of these units, which are we're required to do, then we would end up with a density of this high. That's what it would look like, would be eighteen units per acre. In reality, it would be unlikely. Over years that we would see density at this high, but that's that. Is reflective of what the standards were about. So I just wanted to kind of explain. How the math works. Now, we could get a new development, a brand new green space. Where somebody wants to exercise all the opportunities that would be in here in that new development, if it was. If it was an acre, then they could figure out how to put eighteen units onto that, because they now get to take advantage of all these different models. Different models of housing type, which we'll talk about in a minute. So I'm going to pause there, see if everybody understands that. This sounds big, but but in reality, it probably won't get that much for a very long time, like decades.
If ever.
If ever. And I'll talk about why that that would be true as we move on and particularly about why ADUs um. People really like the idea, but why there are not that many being built.
Okay, let's go on.
This is just the existing. We kind of ran over this already. This is the existing parcels. Think we're good there. And these are some visual representations of each zone. Um so, but we kind of know most of that too. Except for this one, right Bill? Uh here's your model testing.
So what they did is they tested our two lots, seventy two hundred square feet, six thousand. And they said, okay, well, state law says you have to have at least two dwelling units plus you have to have the ADU. How will actually fit? And each of these models evaluate. Having single family and then adding. ADUs or doing a duplex and running through a couple of different missing middle housing types to see whether they work or not. And so the far right hand corner just says, you can do it with our existing lots. It actually would work. And so um they uh took some buildings and they represent the primary buildings. Were had in two detached ADUs as blue. So just as a primer. Building coverage in our residential zones, our single family residential zone is a maximum of thirty five percent. So that means if if this is a lot. A maximum building coverage means the footprint can't be no more than thirty five percent of that lot area. So that's why you'll see this number come up a couple of different times because it's saying you can do it. If you have. A primary building with an eleven hundred square foot main floor, which means that if it was two story, we twenty two hundred square feet. Uh not including the basement and you had at least a thousand square foot ADU, it could work. Okay, next one. So then they looked at what if you had a duplex, an existing duplex, could you put an ADU on it? Now, these are all scenarios that that would be allowed in the future. And we do have some duplexes, which. Arrow Leaf um is an example of that. We just talked about that um at the First Avenue. Recently, they could add an ADU. It would actually work. You could have um sixteen hundred square feet. As a footprint and you could have at least a five hundred square foot ADU and we could comply and it would work. Uh then the next scenario was called a stack flat. So stack flats, instead of. Uh units being side by side. They're stacked, they're they're seat, they're small. Buildings, so they're not, everybody thinks of an apartment building with. Three stories as being this gargantuan building, but stacked flats are very small. They're about the size of a single family. Home, but each level is its own residential dwelling unit. So you could have stacked flat. With an incredibly high fifteen hundred seventy five square foot footprint, that's pretty big. Uh plus you could still do at least a five hundred square foot ADU and it would still work.
How high can you go?
Um in this case, they probably will be recommending at least three stories.
So with when is it, which is showing from uh airport or whatever, how can you go from air heights?
Right, right now in our residential zones, the maximum height uh is generally about thirty five feet.
Yeah. Good question, though. Um so cottage units, we were just talking about this a little bit earlier. This is another type of. Missing middle. So each of them are individual, single family homes, but they're on one lot. And then they commonly own the property and they're oriented around a courtyard. So in this case. You would not be able to get an ADU, but you could get four units. So again, our threshold is three. We can actually get four um. It would work. And in the side notes, and you'll start to see this. Uh they're going to start saying, but you have to deal with parking. And so overall, the recommendation out of many of these is that we have to reduce our required. On-site parking in order to help. Allow for meeting these number of units um. That we're required to have per lot. So courtyard, as I mentioned before, uh is apartment complex around a common area. They're relatively small. And in this case, it would go over at four units, it would go over our maximum site coverage. So they're saying um. We'd have to look at site coverage standard if we wanted to modify it. We'd also have to reduce some setbacks. We're a bit kind of squeezing more into a site when we're looking. At courtyard apartments, um because they're typically, they're they're just going to be big on a lot.
And remember, this is a six thousand square foot lots. This is primarily our duplex, R two and R three zoning. This isn't a single family.
So then they looked at either triplex or townhome. So townhomes under the building code. Are an individual unit. So when you look at the different colors of pink there. All levels are one single family home attached by a common wall. With another unit. Um in that case. Uh again, we'd be uh within the maximum site coverage, but they're also going to recommend things like setback reductions. And looking at parking. Uh then they looked at what happened if they reduced some of the setbacks. To help with building size. So in this case, the primary building is nineteen seventy five, whereas in the previous one, the main level was about twelve hundred square feet. And they said you, it would um go over the site coverage, um but this bigger unit, you could get. The home, you could also have an internal ADU. So converting part of the house or one level of the house into an ADU, plus you could have detached. Uh then the next one. Is uh if you reduced the setbacks. Of injuries, setback on one side, or pieces for rear accidents. You would be pretty close to be thirty three percent. You could do a simple family in two ADUs. So every scenario they ran through, they found that with the exception of the uh. Courtyard apartments. And the substantially larger footprint of a single family. That we would be able to fit these types of housing into the model and I'll just. Supplement this fact saying that what the. What the state is saying is even though we had, we were supposed to pick six different kinds of housing out of nine choices. So townhome, courtyard, stack flats. Uh duplex, triplex, fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex. And I can't remember what the ninth one is. They said that if you can, once you hit your meeting your minimum density of two units, you could stop. And I'm going to talk a little about why that makes sense everywhere in the city. But by using just a couple of the different models plus the mandatory ADUs, so basically duplex. Triplex, townhome, clustered housing. Um. I think cottage housing. Uh we we actually could get there and meet our minimums moving forward. And everybody's really disappointed they don't have six plus. But um that's really, that's all the work that they're doing for us is they're they're kind of running through these scenarios. Okay.
Keep going.
This is just the findings after that.
So um what they've done is this part of this audit is then they've said, okay, here's your basic code. Relating to the zones and the development standards. And on the right, this is that representation. Like you need to go in and you need to change these things. So it creates a roadmap for future work on this project of what codes need to be touched. In order to facilitate uh the two units, what we need. For laws. Um updating names, we're have to look at. Um changing our accessory dwelling unit. We're actually not compliant with the state law before it got changed. Uh there was a case law that prohibited. Local agencies from requiring things like conditional use permits for ADUs or codes that old that. It predated that law and just didn't get corrected.
The the language speaks more to. It being as more of like an accessory for like a handicap person, kind of that. That's how old our code is. Is it doesn't even speak to the specific use in which they're typically used for now. Um so yeah, we're in serious need of an update.
Um so other areas just to be transparent, ADUs now um. Allow for renter of both units. In old code, it required the owner to occupy one of the unit. By state law, uh once there's an ADU, we're required to allow the ADU to be divided off. Separately saleable from the primary residence. Uh it does require that we have a um. If we have a max for ADU, it has to be at least a thousand square feet. Uh we talked about the traffic impact fees. It can't be more than fifty percent of the rate of a single family. Uh so there's a, there's a variety of things that this section of the code has to be updated to address.
If you have an internally, does it count if you want uh that to move? So to take it off, how do you divide that if it's?
Condominium.
Oh. Does it still use land or if it's internal?
It doesn't. What happens with a condominium is it ties up the property with each of the units as a common ownership.
Even if it's inside the other room? So you still have the land, it's still counted as two buildings, there's two determiners?
Uh no, it um it's a really good question. So if you've got, if you've got. Uh an internal ADU. And you want to go through condominium, which you file with the state of Washington. What happens is all this property gets tied to these two units as a common ownership, but you can still own from the walls in. That bottom level separate from the top level. That's how condominiums work.
Let's see, so the maximum, if you say, we first, we cover the land. Uh you know, for all the hits, you can tell that lot that counts as the number of students that.
If you, if you take what was a single family and you convert the bottom level into an ADU, it now counts towards, you now have two on. The lot and you've met your ADU requirements, you could do that. It's a good question.
It's hard to wrap my head, but you know, being a Westerner, it's hard to wrap my head around that. You know, in places like New York. You know, on the east coast, people would buy apartments. We would say it's apartment or what I hear, we would call it a condominium back here. They call them apartments. And you own your floor, I mean, or a big, your space, but you own it. You have a mortgage. You don't own the shell. You don't own the land, really. You've got the interior of this thing and it's, and that was a legit, you know, it's a legit. Way of having a ownership, but it's really hard. You know, you're after it.
It's a really good point. It's been around in the United States. You know, gosh, since even the turn of the century, right? New York, you know, sold off apartments, but it's. Pretty common in other places in the world for people to um buy their apartments. Yeah, that's that's true. So with the law, so we'll have to amend that whole code so that we'll be able to um. Be able to divide all these units and we're going to talk about that. We get here a little bit further.
Yeah, we'll we'll circle back around. I I do want to get some feedback on the recommendations, though, the specific ones. Um but this is the code breakdown. And then.
I did have a couple of. Couple of questions, uh it took me, I had to read it about nine times to understand. The the maximum minimum. Thousand foot thing. And I finally figured it out.
So the 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 rest of this document is mostly appendixes and the maps kind of showing what and where. Uh but. Yeah, let's go back. And look at the key findings. Some of these we've gone over a little bit. Uh some minimal open space present and space consuming testing scenario with all structures is one starting to check. We're looking front yard, effectively driveway, uh stacking units, flexible front setback. So one of the questions has to do with setbacks. Um in the front, there is this recommendation of reduction. Uh from twenty five to twenty and also the requirements for alleys. I think we talked a little bit about this last month. But um. Framework was requesting that we get some specific feedback from the planning commission. What are your thoughts on a uh front setback reduction? For missing middle housing projects? Or I guess all. Projects moving forward. It means uh it would, instead of twenty five feet from the road, it would be twenty feet. So it would just be a five foot difference.
Hmm is it going to include the sidewalk?
Typically, typically, any new subdivision going in, we try to get the sidewalks in the right of way. So it wouldn't apply for that. The the it would be from the lot line, which the sidewalk would be within the, on the other side of that.
Honestly. It makes. I'll get this density up, so that just makes sense to me.
A new development or existing lots also?
I mean redevelopment, it would apply. So if like. A house burned down and then you rebuilt anyone on it, your your setback would then be twenty feet if that's.
You can also do it for opening the shit.
That's it, yeah.
So I I know and understand that, you know, the state. The legislature passed passed these two things and and we have to figure it out of doubt. What I'm wondering is. What, what, if anything, do we know? I mean, I know it's early in in the process. But I'm really wondering. Do we have any sense of what the demand is either for consumers or for developers? Are there any sort of going in assumptions like? For instance, if we wanted as a city to redevelop some of our older parcels in the core. And say, well, we're going to condemn some land and start putting in alleys so that we can redevelop these lots. To the six thousand foot, say, or or whatever. I mean, is there, did did any of this? Does this come with any assumptions or or? You know?
It's hard to say that. The irony is, is that when when you said some of the older land, my my thought initially is. The older parcels actually have alleys. So they're the only, the only old parcels in the city. So yeah, it was that forward thinking from nineteen fifty five. Um. Uh I, like Heather said earlier, the the city, our job is to provide opportunity. Not necessarily develop the site ourselves, so um. I I don't really think about it that way. Do you think about it at all regarding?
And then redeveloping is a new standard? No, because it's fairly expensive to do. So. Easy, if I if I was looking at that project, you would be um upside down financially. For so long that it wouldn't make sense. If you acquired property that was already developed in the trade to re-plant it. Um so that it could have additional road as an example of that. Um. So where we do see examples of that. Are large parcels with. A building that hasn't, has reached its end of life, for example, and so. Um old shopping centers that are vacant. Um sometimes this type of activity because. The redevelopment value is is greater than the acquisition, demolition and redevelopment of a site. Um and so that that's the reality of of reinvestment is. That the redevelopment value has to be significantly higher than the acquisition, demolition and redevelopment. So that's why in this case, the consultant spent all the time. In the audit figuring out if I took an existing lot, how could we get work? On the existing lot, because the reality of us going back and getting alleys is pretty non-existent. What it will do is um. We will look at things like um perhaps reducing some setbacks, the buildings are closer to the street. But maintaining or even increasing setbacks on the side yard. So that that those units in the back at least have a guaranteed walkway to get back there. And think about it, um. When you, when you're driving down the street, start seeing how much width there is between those buildings. There's really not an opportunity. To provide parking back there. So we'll start looking at these recommendations about, we're starting to require. Walkway, it'll probably start requiring us to think about easements for the utilities that we need to go back there so they can be separately served. Because again, we're supposed to be able to allow them to be divided off. Um and it begins to um. Beg the question of. What are we going to do with all this parking? So one answer and one recommendation they have here is. Is to uh reduce parking, reduce basically parking down to one. Required parking space. Per unit on a lot. In comparison today, a single family is required to have two. So if you start to have. Three units on a piece of property, then we're saying you. To have three and you gotta figure out where to do it um as well. So that's part of the recommendations. Can you go back to one of the images? Just wanna show you an example of this. So um. That's not very fair, cuz that one's an alley. But in all of these images, you see that they're proposing parking in the front. So um. I would encourage you after this to go see how wide your lot is. And then think about cars. And there's a whole conversation here about. The the appearance of the front. Of development. And the character of residential development and the presence of cars all the way across. All the way crops. And one of the one of the first things is we can't technically allow parking all the way across a lot. Because that's a driveway and we we are required to allow for a round from snow and rain to go to the. Side of the road so it can seep down, right? So if it's all on perky surface with parking, where is that water gonna go? So from a technical standpoint, we probably can't allow for parking all the way across a sixty foot wide lot or fifty foot wide lot. So there isn't gonna be a lot of space available to get a car too. Because I can't get to the backyard cuz we don't have outlets.
So I could I could think of some, I could think of some potential engineer. Answers to that, like semi-permeable park. Concrete grades or some other things. So but I guess my my concern with things like the setback, the front setback, you know, I'm thinking to myself. We're creating the conditions to allow people to do this without, at this point, having any idea how many people would actually take advantage. And so I'm a little concerned and unintended consequences of this. Would be. Less desirable lots for builders and for potential home buyers. Because we've had to make all these adjustments. Will allow something that might not ever happen. And I'm not against it. The the, you know, I mean, I get it. It's the law. We have to live with it. And I'm not against the concept. But I I I do have. I do have some concerns about things like that. That if we we create. We we set up all these setbacks specifically to create these conditions and we don't get taken. And then, you know, if we if we. Have we done ourselves a disservice intentionally?
Well, we do have an idea of how many people will come to the area and we're about to get a number, a literal number. That tells us how many housing units that we're likely in half plan to in the next twenty years. And so this kind of map. Um. Will help us figure out if we're doing enough with our zoning standards to facilitate. Meeting that housing target. Now, the other, there's a couple of pieces to that. Uh. The other is that. Um. Because we're gonna get a housing allocation, it's gonna come with an income target. An income level target.
Okay.
And it will range from zero income up to a hundred and twenty percent, which is what we call market rate. Um. So there'll be housing in the market rate and then what's called eighty percent of area median income, federally classified as low income. And then fifty percent of area median income and then thirty percent and then zero. So we will, why I'm telling you this is. We have a housing target, we'll know an income target, so that's gonna help us with information about what's more likely to be a rental or a home loan, an ownership opportunity. And we also um. Will be. Uh. Basically. Having to show that it worked at the end of five years. And so. One of the areas we'll get to as we work toward the comp plan. In getting that kicked off is we'll start to talk about incentives. So when you say we have no idea whether someone's gonna do it. Because we have to meet these income targets, we are gonna start talking about an incentive package. That will um incentivize some types of housing. That will help. Meet these niches of low income housing. So it could be as simple. As things like we give a discounted rate on our hookup churches for water and sewer. It could be we give discounted rate. On our traffic impact fees. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could do. Um. There is at the other end of the spectrum, what's called inclusionary zone, which is. If you're going to build a market rate, you're required to build a low income unit. And you've heard about those. Um. In in much larger communities typically where that occurs. Uh. So in other words, I'm. It's more of a um requirement than an incentive, but we have a lot more work to do in this area. That's my point.
What about some of the other things like, for instance, fire prevention? Because. The last thing we want, right, is to create conditions that could potentially allow for a sweeping fire. I mean, houses are already close to you ridiculously close some of them. I can practically, I can reach my fence from my side of my house and I, if I stood on the other side, I could reach my neighbor's fence from your house. Yeah. So I guess my in in there's no way to get a fire truck twins. Right? And now we're talking about reducing potentially a- adding buildings and reducing setbacks. Now, the alley thinks sets, you know. Offset some of that concern potentially. So I I'm saying in very lengthy ways to ask. In doing some of these required things, are there some proactive things we could do as a city? To say reduce fire risk. Could we, can we require potentially additional fire suppression in in some larger buildings or? You know, cuz to me, that, you know, these are concerns. Uh. We're already narrowing streets in some of our developments down and we have increased parking if you've driven down. Uh. Is it Pacific? Where they were um. Yeah, Pacific and and Molly, where they intersect and feed into where. They're building the big multiplexes in there. We've got narrowed streets already. We've got within some of those cottages, there are, I see one cottage in particular. I've seen four cars parked there, two in the driveway and and the entire face of their property has had cars on. And then you get far as the other side. So we're starting to run into some issues potentially with some real congestion. From a public safety standpoint. So so in order to offset that risk, you know, can we do some things? And that's, if we can, that's great. That's, I'd like to explore that. Aspect as well as these other things.
Sure.
To to whatever extent we can.
Yes, you can. And that was a recommendation is is. Um. To consider setback requirements between uh buildings, ADUs. Because they're already addressed in the fire code. So the fire, the international residential code, the international fire code already have setbacks between buildings. Including how much of your you can overhang. Um. So you know, those can, those kinds of setbacks can be incorporated in the zoning code. They have to meet them in the building code anyway. Um. They can even be increased. There are things that we could do with regards to. As I say, development standard ensuring, you know, a path of access for fire safety. So if I'm gonna, you know, have enough, an obstructed room. Five feet all the way to the back, you know, so so we don't allow any buildings closer than five feet, no matter what on the perimeter. Um. Yes, this as an option in the international residential code. The city could adopt the uh requirement for residential sprinklers. The city has not done that. Uh. A very few cities in the state of Washington have done that, but it's an optional portion of the international code. It adds cost to a unit. But. It is an instant response to the fire emergency and they're very effective. For suppressing and stopping the spread of fire because it's an onsite system. Um. There are fire resistant construction. Um. California's been doing this for decades, right? Because of all the the wildfire. And as we look at the. Uh. Sustainability grant and the work we're doing there. Fire risk is going to be one of the areas that we will end up studying and looking at strategies. So that could include. Fire resistant construction, it could be fire resistant landscaping. You know, there are things that we could, we could add to that to address those concerns and thinking about this holistically as a package.
Now, if there's anything against it, but we can't, we're not allowed to put it in, like, anyways, we can't let go from this point of now intended to have alleys.
Our subdivision code, which is the method used to divide land, doesn't require it. And so consequently, development doesn't, doesn't do it. And the reason is. That um putting in an alley is in is like putting in an additional street. It's it's got hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional cost. But as we look at these new development types. Um. That's one of the policy decisions that that we need to make is we just need to start requiring every subdivision to have alleys.
Yeah.
Because it will help us get past this company for new development. That there will be greater spacing between units. There'll be rear access. We are not dealing with the issue where parking's coming to. You know, line up the front yard. Uh. So that that's an assumption and and I hope we, you all agree with that, that pretty subdivision will input for everything. Um. Because even if somebody told us, well, it'll only be single family by law, we can't, we can't recognize that. We have the wow, the possibility that somebody would come back in and do these other. Dwelling type of unit types.
You you already spoke to that, but that's in there as well regarding the pedestrian path, but actually having a mechanism. Uh. To increasing aside setback to ten foot to provide for that pedestrian path. So again, that's a decision that we could recommend. Um. But really, yeah, this is kind of where we're at, where we're looking for feedback on these ideas, cuz these are kind of the ideas that Brainwork gave us. Um. And they're looking for feedback from us and we're looking for feedback from you. Um.
I'll talk about um the parking. So. One of the considerations, because there's gonna be cars, right? And there's gonna be a minimum for parking. Is to allow for one of the required parking spaces to be in front of the lot. So. If this is the lot. They have, they have. Some parking on site. By code, you could tell them that they could count. A space twenty feet long in front of their lot as part of their parking.
On the on the road.
On the road. The result is there won't be more cars on the road, but the roads are designed to have cars parked. Our current road standards require that if you go too narrow. Then you have to mark that side of the street or one side of the street is no parking. So as a road gets narrower. We can require no parking on that side of the street. So the net effect is. That if you end up building on that no parking side of the street, we obviously can't allow them to. Count parking in front of their house as one of the parking, but that was another option to consider. And then the last thing has to do with that mandatory subdivision provision. Uh. Because the state law says we have to allow for an ADU detached ADU to be. On its own lot sold. Uh. The state has something called a unit lot subdivision. So it's a basically. A subdivision process that only comes in after the fact. And allows. To divide the lot. So that that. ADU unit can be split separately. So we have to do it. It's a requirement that. It's in here, so you're aware of it.
Let me talk about the uh coverage. Fiasco.
Um. So we have a really strange code where, remember I said the site coverage is thirty five percent? That's for the building. And our code has a separate standard for. So if this is the front of the lot, this is the rear of the lot, we have a separate standard. That um counts the the back part of the lot differently. So what they're recommending is we update the site coverage and we we just say the maximum is X.
Hmm.
So when we're counting the ADU plus the main building, the total site coverage is no more than. Thirty five to forty percent.
Yeah. So right now, the i- in most of, we'll just use, there are one fun example. You can have thirty five percent for the dwelling unit, so your house, but you can have up to fifty percent coverage. So you have like accessory sheds, garages, stuff like that. That counts towards the fifty percent and up and but not a thirty five. We're we're hoping to simplify that into say a clean forty uh for everything. Um. So that's one of the recommendations in there again, cuz that's getting really. Uh. Because if you have like a garage, you put an ADU over that, the garage is counting towards a total fifty percent, but not a thirty five, blah. Uh. So to simplify it, the recommendation is to go forty. So I think it's a perfect place to meet and spend a lot. And make my life easier.
It's all really so that life.
That's what it is. That's what it is. To be fair, like ninety nine percent of this is gonna make my life much harder, so I'll take my wins when I can get them. Um. But yeah, I I mean, that's it's pretty straightforward, but any thoughts on the overall coverage?
I I, you know, looking at the lot sizes and trying to do some of the math, forty percent seems like a good target. My my hunch is. The from a consumer standpoint. People are are less inclined in giant yards than they were forty years. They're expensive to maintain. They take a lot of work.
Yeah.
You don't see teenagers mowing lawns, or in my case, you don't see ten year olds mowing lawns when I was a kid, you know, so. You know, less lawn and less yard for most people is probably not a detriment. And so, yeah, going to forty percent, to me, seems like a really logical step.
And typically right now, um, just because again, every single house in everybody heights. I look at, um, that goes in, we're closer more to the twenty five to thirty percent coverage when they go in. No one's usually pushing thirty five percent. So we're already kind of low on that. So that just would give them some extra room to do an ADU if they'd like to. Uh. For existing, but also again, um, for the new stuff that provides a little more flexibility.
So I was noticing the verbiage, they're about size and ADUs, or maybe it was higher up. So it might correct in thinking or understanding that that the. We could set. We could set a maximum of a. Thousand square feet.
Hmm.
Do we have a minimum?
We currently do um. But we want to amend that. So what we're suggesting is. Go out and look and see what the building code requires of the minimum size. And it's not prescriptive. It doesn't say it's, you know, five hundred square feet. It's kind of backing in by by the code when it says, well, you have to have so much area for sleeping. You have to have so much area minimum for. Sanitary facilities. You have to have so much area for cooking. That creates basically a a minimum envelope reasonably that you can meet building code in order to to live in. Um. What it it says, you don't have to have a maximum, but if you do have a maximum, it can't be less than a thousand square feet. That's how like the code actually. I know, it's legislatures write write these. So in the examples you saw, they did a variety of footprints. So an ADU is not limited. Um. To only five hundred or feet. If it's a two story, if we allow two story, that's actually a thousand square foot. On unit. And they can get fairly big depending on.
Right.
Um. What people are designing.
Well, actually, that makes that brings to mind something I hadn't thought of, and that was I was thinking exclusively of detached. ADUs and thinking to myself, my first house built by a builder in a subdivision. Was less than a thousand square feet, you know, it's three bedrooms and a bath. To me, that's not a, that's not an accessory dwelling. That's a dwelling. That's a flat out single family home. So I chuckled when I saw the thousand square feet. What I didn't think about was an internal place where you took a a third floor or you took a basement in a fifteen hundred square foot house and said. Gonna make this into an apartment or a thing. And so, so yeah, that that, so maybe the language could be split out. Detached ADUs have maximum footprint. And internal ones maybe don't, don't need to have.
Yeah, yeah, you could toy with things like percentages. So let's say. Um. You're considering an internal versus an external um. And you can say, well, you know, an internal ADU can't be more than fifty percent. Of an existing building. Um. Now, keeping my people can will add on. Um. To a building to do an ADU, I I experienced that quite a few times. Um, to a building to do an ADU. I, I experienced that quite a few times, only with the city's program. So I, I think it's a good idea to think about sizes in relationship to, to the building. And the reason why there used to be those kinds of, oh, you can't be more than fifty percent is because back in the day. You were required to have that unoccupied unit and they wanted it to appear. Like the primary unit was still the dominant unit. Those requirements have been removed by the state legislature. I mean, you can have a big unit, a small unit, they can be equal sized.
Now they still have the, the, the site coverage.
The site coverage is still there.
In, in your setbacks, so you're.
I guess it all, I guess it all does kind, does kind of create some. Some controls. Okay, maybe my point is, point is new.
No, I think they're really good questions, because they, they feed into the conversation as we, we progress over this over the next. July, August, September, October. I only know that we're probably next five months, probably. And this will start to gel, we'll start to see codes that will um represent the images that you're seeing.
You kind of know everything else, though. And the rest of the document is more just um supporting appendixes, so um. I think that's all we got unless you wanted to go over anything else. I mean, the, these maps are cool, because they're maps and they're like maps, but. Um, they're just kind of visualizing our existing residential parcel sizes, um, ingredients. They also did a good job of making them work in black and white, which I appreciate. And yeah, there's just some additional information and breakdowns, so you can actually see the uh. The percentages and coverages here going on in a three D view, but in the two D, so.
Yeah. Very.
Well, Mark, unless you had anything else, we can keep going here. I will find a better way than, since scrolling up. Maybe.
No, I'm just gonna scroll.
This wouldn't apply if a property was like non-conforming, but it. So I, I think right over here on the corner of twelfth and Russell, that property that just sold, it's like on an acre right behind all the, next to the base, Ford and all that. I think it's like industrial.
Yeah, we have.
Couldn't do anything with that, could you? Even with all that open and extra land they have around their house.
We are not conforming code, does not allow for expansion of the residential use or creation of additional dwelling. So that would kind of moot any of that.
To put a giant shop up there if they want.
They, they can, they can develop a site in for accessory use.
What about the probably like at the end, um, with the script there with it, it used to be a, uh, the only gas station. Last one we hit at, at ten announced this and that building was just, you know, uh, broken. They had all that lot. What do you do with that?
If, I believe I'd have to look in a map. Um, I believe everything on highway two, though, would. Is, is within the sound contour, so it wouldn't be eligible for residential development anyway.
So.
It, it would be a commercial lot, or I'm sorry, I guess we have fourteen maps here.
Yeah, it's only things that are in light yellow. And orange can be residential.
Yeah, so all that stuff is gonna be. No, no, the highway two will uh remain. Commercial with the allowance of multifamily townhouses through uh mixed unit developments, which is kind of what we have right now. Um, and our mixed unit, our mixed unit standards are similar to the missing metal, so. Yeah, but the, this only applies again to. Area zone primarily that permits single family housing. So it wouldn't apply to any of the commercial or industrial zones.
Does area heights own that out there or? Is this something else?
I have a question about, and this goes back to the parking thing, and I've read, it might have been in the, the state. Product. I don't remember seeing it in, in this thing we're looking at. Something about requirements were off. Street or maybe it was on street parking within a half mile of major transit stop.
We don't have any major trains.
We don't, we don't have one at all. Even like with the highway two redo, none of those stops are gonna.
One of them, would that, will that be a high capacity? Will that qualify?
In the future, yes. Uh, US two will be what's called a high performance transit route, which means that it'll have fifteen minute or more frequent service throughout the day. But the S T doesn't have funding yet to um provide that type of service. So for today. It will continue to be the service that it is, but in the future. And part of S T's long range plan, yes, that'll be a high performance transit. But until. That happens or until we're notified by S T that are ready to do that, we can't do TODs, which are transoperated development plans. Because there isn't the frequency of uh service to qualify. Um, so if you're um. Spot on the, you know, thinking about US two being eventually one. Uh, things like we've done today, which is the orange on the north side of. USC, that's high density residential. Uh, no, in the center.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. So for all of you who's. It's uh parallel to US two and it's about a block north of US two. And it kind of hugs uh Sunset Elementary and the downtown plan and identify that this high density residential someday. So that, that density of housing close to what would be a high performance transit route would support the route and it could support other. More intense commercial uses along that, that corridor eventually, because in order for business to be successful, you have to. It's why businesses that are on the edge of talent often. Not get enough traffic in order to be viable in the future. In addition to that, um, the area on US two, which is basically built from. Uh, Garfield uh down to Craig Road is eligible for mixed use development, which is. Multifamily over a retail or office setting and that supports. Uh, the density for bus service and. Uh, more intensive commercial uses eventually. So some of the bones are there, but. Uh, we really have to, you won't see that property flip. Because remember we talked about the cost of acquisition, demolition versus redevelopment? That high performance transit notice, the service and. The possibility of redevelopment, basically with higher density residential has to be the. Character for development to buy those lots.
So I appreciate all the, the information tonight. Excuse me. Um, if there's no other questions or any other comment, let's uh close this out. That's seven twenty one.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank. Have a good night. Sorry, I'm uh not feeling.
You're good. Everybody have a good night. We'll see you next month.
Good night.